And we're live.
Okay, the meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmot. I now ask the clerk to please call a roll.
Trustee Sullivan. Trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kersman.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Plunkett.
Here.
And President Polinski.
Here. So we're all here. We obviously have a quorum. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams software. And I now ask Peter Skiles, our Director of Administrative Services, to explain some logistics to members of the public joining us tonight.
Thank you, President Polinski. So everybody will have started the meeting tonight muted. And when President Polinski calls for public comments, those joining us with the Teams client, which is everyone so far, you can toggle your mute status by using the toolbar in the meeting area. You just wake it up with your mouse or touch the screen. And there's a microphone button that you can click to toggle your mute status on and off. And only attendees can unmute themselves. No one can unmute another attendee. And just in case you're having technical difficulties or something goes wrong during the meeting, just know that you will have alternate means to provide public comment as well, which will be discussed shortly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Skiles. And I'm actually going to mute everyone right now. So everyone is muted. And if they need to speak, I will remind them to unmute themselves. Now, for those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a gubernatorial disaster proclamation, which was issued by Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person village government meetings have been canceled. However, the state has amended the Open Meeting Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the village board during the governor's disaster proclamation. So we are conducting our business tonight in compliance with the new provisions of state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on local access channel six and also on the internet on YouTube. And I'll read the URL for you. It's www.youtube.com/user/villageofwilmot/live. One more time for folks who are watching on cable and want to switch to YouTube. It's A recording of this meeting will be archived on the village's YouTube website, as we do with all of our televised public meetings. Now, a remote meeting, as Mr. Skiles suggested, requires a different mechanic for public participation. So to ensure that our residents, business owners, and other interested parties have the opportunity to participate in this meeting, we have solicited public comment prior to the start of the meeting via email. If you sent an email to publiccomment@wilmot.com prior to the start of this meeting, your email has been provided to the board members, and it will be included in the minutes of meeting. However, it will not be read during the meeting. Members of the public who are watching the broadcast can participate during our designated public comment periods by submitting comments through the YouTube Live chat feature. And if you do that, a member of the village staff will read that comment to the board. And for those of you who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams via the telephone, at the appropriate time, I'll ask people to speak up if they would like to make a public comment. Because of the logistical difficulties of not being together, I will first just ask people to identify themselves as someone who would like to address the board. I'll assemble a list, and then I will call on the individuals, person by person, for their turn to speak. For people speaking during public comment, they will be allotted three minutes to address the board, just as they are during an in-person meeting. All comments from the public, regardless of how they are received, will be recorded into the meeting minutes. And again, I will remind people that I have muted everyone. So please keep yourself on mute until you are ready to speak. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted on wilmot.com on the Friday before our meeting. So residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contained 867 pages. Oh, wait. No, I'm sorry. This week's package, I thought that was the wrong number, contained 511 pages. It seemed big. So we'll move on to item two, which is public comment. Again, in an in-person meeting, public comment during the public comment section of the meeting, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda tonight. Members of the audience will be able to comment on items which are on the agenda at the appropriate time when those are actually being considered. This meeting, though, is being conducted remotely. So public comments, which were submitted by email in advance of the meeting, again, have been provided to the board and are part of the public record, but will not be read during the meeting. I would now ask people who are watching on YouTube Live to submit comments for the village staff to read. You can find the chat window to the right of the video window. And so while people are typing, I will now ask if there are any individuals who have connected to the meeting via Teams or via the telephone who would like to address the board. Ask people to identify themselves now. Okay, moving on. Mr. Artiega, was anybody, did anybody type in anything in the chat window in Microsoft, I'm sorry, in YouTube Live?
This is Peter Skiles, and no, we don't have any comments through YouTube Live yet.
Okay. And again, I did not hear anyone who wanted to be heard. So I will move on.
Sir, I'm sorry. I was not on the telephone. I'm on video.
Yep.
My name's Adam Augustinsky, and I would like a three-minute opportunity as I read your rules, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, hang on one moment. Let me see if there's anybody else. Are there any other individuals who would like to address the board? All right, Mr. Augustinsky, it looks like you are off mute and free. You have three minutes. Go right ahead.
Mr. President, members of Board of Trustees, I've been a resident, this is my wife, for 26 years. I come to you on a matter of urgency. I'll follow up in a little more detail. At your last meeting, I was very impressed with how you discussed the front yard batting cage, a seasonal recreational structure, and you made rules about hours, light, noise, and use, especially in the context of living together during the COVID epidemic, when many folks study and work at home. There's a situation in our neighborhood of seasonal recreational structures being built for about six weeks, a sound and light show, a radio reception system are constructed without any oversight of the village. And the problem has gotten substantially worse in the last couple of years. There have been, this is over six weeks of time approximately, we've had double-decker busloads of people coming from all over the city and suburbs, because when we come out, when people are drunk, when people are blocking roads, when there are children in the roads, when thousands, I think it's over 75,000, lights are flashing, and there's horrible noises, nobody patrols, nobody cares. And I would ask you, please, to take some action in a reasonable way to regulate, just as you did a little batting cage, to regulate a show that is on YouTube, talking about YouTube, it's on YouTube, it has hundreds of subscribers, and there are people now being bused in for entertainment from public bus companies, including a double-decker company that is in red. There are three school buses that have come recently, children just running around. We live a few blocks from Harper Street. This is not a matter between neighbors. We don't have a problem with the neighbors. It's not a religious issue. It's an issue of an entertainment extravaganza that's completely unregulated, that proposes, that has health, safety, and a bunch of other problems that need to be remedied. And we are not the village. We cannot take this action in our hands. As a matter of fact, we've worked with the folks who own the property. Those folks do not take the time to supervise. They have police. They're often out of their home during the time. We've had people banging on doors. And I'll leave you with this. There's nothing more disgusting than trying to celebrate. My dad died a couple of years ago, and he always did the Christmas Eve, because that's in, you know, my family, it's more important, Christmas Eve meal. And he's doing the Christmas Eve blessing. He's in his early 80s. And all of a sudden, cacophonous noise outside because there's a radio thing, and it's South Park blaring, and it's a certain song. And it really, you know, it's the kind of thing that really shouldn't happen anywhere in our community. There is a way to regulate it. It is not an expression of any freedom, a First Amendment right, or anything of the sort. It's a show that's put on that takes several months to put on. And I would ask you, whatever is reasonable for the village to take action, that was a smart thing, respectfully, that I think you did. And the amount of time you spent was probably five times the amount you've spent over the last 10 years on our problem, that you spent helping the folks with the batting cage. This is six weeks. This is a horrible situation that affects the neighbors. And I would ask you, please, to regulate it reasonably. I love Christmas, and, but I don't love having, and especially in the age of COVID, obviously, several hundred people, I think, we don't count, of course, per night coming, sometimes parked all the way to the end of the street. And again, this is my hope that you stop this before the construction for Halloween and/or Christmas begins, because it should be regulated like anything else. If a batting cage is a problem, which I agree it is, this is, I would submit, without exaggerating, 500 times a more serious problem. And I thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity. I know, Mr. President, you live in the area, but you're about a block and a half behind us. And we get the brunt of all of this, and it's not fun. It's not fun when thousands of people come every week, and people give you the finger, and there are people necking with limousines. I don't know any families in Wilmot that have limousines, that are necking in limousines or giving you the finger when you say, please be quiet. So please help us. And I'm hoping I can follow up with Mr. Berman, the president, and the trustees. Please put this on the forefront of your agenda for the next month or so before construction begins. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to address you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Augustinsky. Yes, as you know, I can see it also from my house. So yeah, my suggestion would be follow up with Mr. Stein, Corporation Counsel, and Mr. Berman, because I know there have been conversations on this in the past. So, okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we will move on to the consent agenda, which is item three. As described on the agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the village board are placed on the consent agenda. All items that begin with the number three are on the consent agenda. And tonight, the consent agenda consists of items 3.1 through item 3.13. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and will not be discussed. So I will begin by asking if there's any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. People who are watching on YouTube Live should submit their requests via the chat window. And if there are any individuals who have connected to the meeting via Teams or the telephone who'd like to remove an item from the consent agenda, I'd ask them to identify themselves now. Okay, we'll give people a minute here. Sometimes it takes a second to unmute. All right. Were there any items submitted via YouTube Live, Mr. Skiles?
No comments or items submitted.
Okay. Are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, this is trustee Dodd, and I'd like to remove item 3.7, which is zoning case 2020-z-08.
So that's item 3.7, zoning board of appeals, case number 2020-z-8 for 1100 Laramie. Are there any other items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. May I have adopted a motion to adopt the consent agenda, again, excluding item 3.7?
No vote.
I believe that was trustee Dodd. Is there a second?
Second.
I think trustee Sullivan was the first one in there. It was a close race between three of you, though. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Trustee Sullivan.
Hi.
Trustee Barrow. Trustee Barrow.
Sure.
Hi. Trustee Dodd.
Hi.
Trustee Kersman.
Hi.
Trustee Kennedy.
Hi.
Trustee Plunkett.
Hi.
And President Polinski.
Hi. So the motion carries. The consent agenda has been adopted. If you are dialed in here or connected for an item on the consent agenda that was just approved, and I'll clarify for people who are watching tonight, again, all the items beginning with three have been approved, and that includes land use committee items 3.4, 3.5, and 3.6. If you were here for one of those items, it was just approved. And there'll be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the consent agenda. So you are free to log off, hang up, or however you're connected. But of course, you are more than welcome to watch the rest of the meeting as well. All right, we'll move on to item four, which is report of officers. First report is from our village manager, Mr. Berman.
No report, Mr. President.
Next up is our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. President.
Item five is the report of the Liquor Control Commissioner, and there is no report tonight. So we will move on to our Standing Committee reports. Item 6.1 is the Land Use Standing Committee Report. Trustee Barrow.
Thank you, President Polinski. I move to remove from the table item 3.7.
Okay, so that's item 3.7. First, we're going to have a motion to remove from the table. Is there a second?
Second.
And I believe under the state's rules for remote meetings, the clerk needs to make this a roll call vote. So would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to remove item 3.7 from the table?
Trustee Sullivan.
Hi.
Trustee Barrow.
Hi.
Trustee Dodd.
Hi.
Trustee Kersman.
Hi.
Trustee Kennedy.
Hi.
Trustee Plunkett.
Hi.
And President Polinski.
All right. So the motion carries. The item has been removed from the table. So back to trustee Barrow.
Thank you, President Polinski. I move to approve zoning board of appeals case 2020-z-08, 1100 Laramie Avenue, regarding a request for an expansion with a special use educational facility, secondary, a 3.0-foot height variation, lobby and east roof, a 4.5-foot parapet height variation, lobby and east roof, and 11.0-foot height variation theater, an 11.5-foot parapet height variation theater, a 37.0-foot height variation fly tower, a 38.5-foot parapet height variation, a 7.0-foot light pole height variation, and a 2.0-foot aisle width variation to permit the construction of a theater addition and associated site improvements in accordance with the plan submitted. The use shall run with the use, adoption of ordinance number
Okay. Thank you, trustee Barrow. Is there a second?
Second.
That was trustee Dodd, the second. Thank you. So trustee Dodd, you asked that this item be removed from the consent agenda. So I would yield the floor to you for your comments about it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, President Polinski. For those of you on the phone, I just want to make sure anybody who are watching this, I just want to make sure everybody knows that 1100 Laramie would be Loyola Academy, just in case anybody wasn't familiar with that. I'd just like to start out by thanking the Loyola team for all your hard work on this Phase Two project. And I'm very excited to see this project implemented. So I fully support this project and am very appreciative to Loyola and Lakata for your work and your commitment to work with the residents to come up with a plan that the neighbors of Loyola fully support. It's not often that we see a project like this come before us with support from the neighbors. And so it really shows a commitment from Loyola to our village as well as to being a good neighbor. So thank you again. So I requested this to be removed, not because I am not supportive of it. As I said, I'm very supportive. But I believe that this is a very important project. And so for that, and I have two reasons why. One is, I just, overall, I think this is an incredibly important project for Loyola, for our community, and one that warrants residents being informed of this project. I believe residents often miss important items that are listed on our consent agenda. And I just wanted to highlight this. Obviously, Loyola spent quite a bit of time going through a master plan, and we just want to acknowledge what they're doing and the work that they're doing. So and the second reason, and most importantly, is I believe the effort made by Loyola and their team to listen to the neighboring residents and make modifications to their plan, including their master plan, as a result of these resident meetings and feedback, is a model that I hope future developers and other schools, churches, businesses can learn from. As I said, it's not often we get a project like this where there is not at least a couple of neighbors who are actually bringing up some concerns. So I'd like to just ask Loyola team to briefly, hopefully in no more than five to 10 minutes, as we have a full agenda here, just to share a final rendering of the plan, so that any resident that's listening or might listen to this later could just see what you're planning to do. And then also just discuss briefly your community engagement process and why you believe this was so successful, again, so that others in the community can learn from you. And again, I just want to thank everybody on the Loyola team that's on this call and everybody from Lakota who also helps support this. So thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Stonequist, are you representing Loyola this evening?
Yeah, I'll eventually turn it over to Scott from Lakota. But I will start off and just say, thank you, trustee Dodd. We are, much like you, we're very excited. We think this is not only a wonderful project for Loyola Academy and our internal student community and parent community. We think this is a big project for the village of Wilmot as well. And we believe that the timing is crucial, as our goal is to break ground in April. And we are hopeful that spring hopes eternal. And when, you know, the season turns around, that we will be leading the forefront in new ways and new opportunities for excitement in the neighborhood. Before I hand it over to Scott, I will say this, though. You know, part of a judgment education is conversation. And the conversations that have been opened with the neighbors have made us smarter, have made them smarter. The partnerships we've formed through Phase One, and some have been, you know, learned by initiation by fire or learned from mistakes. We have worked really well together, and I believe you see that in the results. And Scott will share with you in Phase Two. So we are thrilled. As much as we are excited about a new theater at Loyola Academy, the partnership that we have made with the neighbors and in our neighborhood leadership has been a huge help beyond just this project. So Scott, I'll turn it over to you. But thank you, everybody, very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Scott Ferris with Lakota Group. Hope everybody can see me okay on the screen.
We can see you and hear you, yes.
Good, good. I'm going to have Abigail Rose from my office throw up a couple of slides, if you don't mind, and we can walk through the, walk through the topic and end at the rendering that trustee Dodd was looking for. So I think Dennis put it best in that success of this process is not only moving Loyola forward 2025, but rebuilding a neighborhood relationship 2025 and beyond. And it was a process by which started from understanding the context by which we exist as an institution, is a neighborhood. And first and foremost, it's a neighborhood and a community, and you need to know your neighborhood, and you need to know their feelings as well as yours. And you need constant communication. We started that very early on in the process of rebuilding trust, rebuilding contact, making sure we knew who, as hell always likes to remind me, the de facto neighborhood leadership circle is. And this communication, while we show it here, has occurred from the beginning of time till tonight, but it doesn't end tonight. The most important thing is, there's a constant dialogue, a constant level of communication, and there's a platform by which the neighborhood can share concerns and ideas, and by which Loyola can communicate what's going on at the school. And that's, that's the most important thing. It doesn't end tonight. It continues on. We've had great conversations. We've had good dialogue. We've heard the concerns. We've made the changes. We've used that to our advantage, not only to make sure that we were meeting in the need of the community, but also broadcasting to the community the needs of the school. This is a once-in-a-lifetime commitment to building something spectacular for the institution to move education forward. It's a benefit to the community. It's a benefit to the school. We want to make sure everybody understands that. We've tried to think of all of the aspects that had impact on the neighborhood. And I think we, as a team, put together a great proposal that both your planning commission and your appearance review commission have spoke highly of, and we're thankful to be before you this evening. So communication, constant communication goes on, benchmarking our successes. I just want to point that out, that as part of your initial grant of our special use amendment back in our initial phase with the aquatic center and our parking and our stormwater, there were lots of concerns. We've benchmarked those successes. Thank you, Abby. We've benchmarked those successes, not only to get feedback from the neighborhood, but to point out how well it's working and continue to monitor how well it's working, not only internally, but with you as a, as a community. There's stipulations that we check on our parking and our transportation, our traffic movements, and make sure that those are working and following up with those on a regular basis. So it's not only saying what we do, but it's going back and verifying and benchmarking what we do. So the community knows that, in fact, we're following through on that commitment. We've done that. That builds that level of trust. So we're here tonight, and we're very, very thankful to have the support of the, of the community. We've had good dialogue. We've had what we call the blessing of the neighborhood leadership, de facto leadership. But more importantly, we feel like we have a good relationship with this community moving forward. There are going to be other projects. There's going to be other ideas. There's other things going in. And certainly, COVID has changed the whole operational model of this school. But we have a dialogue that Dennis mentioned, and it continues on. That's the real success story behind good community planning. It isn't just about the building, the bricks and mortar. It's about building trust and building relationships and carrying that forward. So thank you, trustee Dodd, for bringing that to light. We find that to be the hallmark of this process and look forward to your positive blessings this evening.
Thank you.
Um, Scott, would you put back up the, the last, the last slide? I'm sorry, the one that had the site plan on it? So really, the, just but for people's identification, the, originally, the theater was going to be right, right there where the red box is. And then it's moved up in the corner and sort of, frankly, out of the way and away from the neighborhood. I mean, it seemed like the neighbors were very positive on the change and viewed it as a change that benefited them as well.
Absolutely. We want to roll back to one of our first plans as part of our initial thing. Thank you. There you go. The initial idea behind our master planning was to place it adjacent to the school and what was the parking lot. And like all good planning initiatives, you constantly reinvent, rethink, test, make sure it works. And what we realized was, the best placement of this to provide the best value, not only for the community, but also internally, from an operational and a circulation standpoint, was that northeast corner. It had the least impact on the community. It had the best impact on parking, circulation, internal connections, and creating great outdoor spaces, outdoor rooms. And we think that at the end of the day, we also left intact a really well-designed and well-planned circulation and parking system that we implemented as part of Phase One. We didn't have to modify that at all. So a success story all around.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions from any of the trustees, whether it was for Ferris or Mr. Stonequist? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, this is a, we did pull this off of consent, so I am compelled to see if there is any public comment at an in-person meeting. I'd ask for a show of hands. But as we've already done in this meeting, it's a little bit different. So if you do have public comment on this matter before we discuss and vote, I'd ask you to submit those comments on YouTube Live. And if there are any individuals who are connected to the meeting via Teams or the phone, who would like to address the board on this matter, I'll ask them to identify themselves now, so I can create that list. Give a minute here for people to unmute potentially and to type. Okay, I don't hear anyone on the line. Mr. Skiles, anybody type anything?
No, not on the YouTube Live.
Okay, great. So, um, are there any further questions from the trustees, perhaps for Mr. Adler, or for the staff, or the applicant? All right. And is there any further discussion before we call the roll on the motion? All right, hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to approve zoning board of appeals report case 2020-z-08, 1100 Laramie Avenue, and for the adoption of ordinance 2020-0-38?
Trustee Sullivan.
Hi.
Trustee Barrow.
Hi.
Trustee Dodd.
Hi.
Trustee Kersman.
Hi.
Trustee Kennedy.
Hi.
Trustee Plunkett.
Hi.
President Polinski.
All right. So the motion carries. The zoning board of appeals recommendation's been accepted, and the ordinance has been adopted. Thank you again to the Loyola team for joining us tonight. So we're back to the land use committee report. Trustee Barrow.
All other items are on the consent agenda.
Finance committee is trustee Kennedy's.
All items are on the consent agenda?
The administration committee, trustee Dodd.
All items were on consent.
Municipal services, trustee Sullivan.
We have one item this evening. It's item 6.41, and it's confirmation to proceed with Phase Two Hibbert Park of the Neighborhood Storage Project. I don't think I'm making a motion, so I'm just going to introduce Ms. Berger Reisch to take the presentation.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Good evening, trustee.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Good evening, trustees. Thank you again for the opportunity to talk about Neighborhood Storage. And the purpose of the agenda item tonight is to seek Village Board concurrence to move forward with the second phase of the Neighborhood Storage Project at Hibbert Park, and really to build on the success and the momentum that we have from Phase One. So I think Eric is going to pull up a presentation that we'll run through. Thank you. Eric, you can advance to the next slide, and the next one. So just to recap the project highlights, this is a 3.3 million gallon underground reservoir at Hibbert Park, similar to what was built at Community Playfield, except this is a pumped tank rather than a gravity tank. We're building about a little over a mile of new storm sewer to get the water to and from that new reservoir. The project also includes a couple of items that were negotiated in the intergovernmental agreement with the Park District, $80,000 for drainage improvements, and $57,000 for comprehensive landscaping at Hibbert Park. And then finally, another highlight that is a little bit unique is we began the negotiation process with Berger Excavating based on the 65% design plans. And we've had a really good success with them in Phase One and hope to continue that with Phase Two, provided that we're comfortable with the, with the pricing that they're providing us. After the initial discussions with them, they have indicated that they intend to hold and in some cases reduce the Phase One unit prices, which gave staff enough confidence to continue that discussion with them as we move into the pre-final plans. This is an updated Phase Two budget slide, and the purpose of this slide is to really show the progression, starting from February of last year, when we showed the Village Board the initial conceptual estimates. Again, these estimates were not based on any hard engineering work, they were really based on just conceptual design. So as we've moved through the various design elements to 30% in April, and now we're up at pre-final design plans in September, you can see there's been a modest increase in the overall project price from 14.2 million to 15.84 million. One of the big differences here is while the storm trap materials were included in the prior version, prior estimates, they have been broken out in this particular stage. But this is a comprehensive estimate, it does include all of the IGA elements with the Park District, all the design and construction engineering, as well as the construction cost, including optimization.
And is there a contingency included in the 15.8 still?
Yes, thank you for asking, President Polinsky. There is a 5% contingency.
Okay. And is that sort of the appropriate level at this point? I know you have bigger contingencies at earlier stages, but when you're at this stage of the design, that's typical?
That's correct. And this is a slide we, we just thought we'd add again. This is the exact same slide that we showed back in the presentation that we provided in July. The purpose of this slide is really just to call out some of the items that were not anticipated in the concept design, that were new to the project, that added cost. So I'm happy to discuss any of these items. Some of them have, again, this is based on 65% plans. We have progressed beyond that into pre-final. So this slide has not been updated. Some items have, may have increased, some items might have decreased, but it gives you a sense for where those increases were.
So Bridget, this is Trustee Dodd. Just a question on at this stage, I mean, if these change, do we have any opportunity at a later point in time to make a decision on some of these smaller projects of whether we'd proceed or not, or is this our, is this tonight the final time we would do that?
Trustee Dodd, I believe the Village Board could talk about things, items they don't want at any point. I mean, you could talk about it now. I would say now would be appropriate before we actually completed the, the design plans. So, but, but that's not to say the Village Board couldn't award the project at a later date and still remove something if they wanted to.
Well, I just recall in the, when you gave the presentation to us in July, I believe some of these were, you know, pretty critical to the, to the, to the Phase Two project, and some were more, we had some flexibility on them. So maybe just refresh our memory on which ones are, for better word, discretionary?
Sure. I, I, let me point out that discretionary items, the traffic signal pedestrian improvements at Glenview and Hibbert Road intersection for $68,000, that is discretionary. But just today, I sent a letter to the superintendent of the county asking for their participation in that cost, because it is a county, Hibbert Road is a county road. So we're hopeful that we'll get some reimbursement from the county on that. The green infrastructure improvements on Valley View and at Hibbert and Glenview Road are certainly more discretionary. They're in keeping with, I think, the Village Board's vision with Neighborhood Storage, which is to not only build gray infrastructure, but supplement that with additional green infrastructure. And they fit really nicely with this project, because we're working right in the area, and they're areas that lend themselves really well to, to green stormwater management benefits.
And Ms. Berger, isn't there also, what's the optimization portion of the Phase Two project? Is there an optimization, optimization element in this project, or is it just in one and three?
There is. Eric, can you go to the previous slide, please? You can see the line item for optimization, President Polinsky. It's, of the three phases, the optimization sewers in Phase Two are the, the smallest in a dollar amount, as well as in length of new sewer, but it's roughly under $1 million worth of optimized sewer. And I believe they're on Beverly Lane and Ramona Road, which are two areas that flood significantly.
Right.
This next slide, one of the trustees, I'm sorry, before I get to the inflation slide, this is just, no, you were, you're right, Eric, thank you. The overall project budget, again, this is a slide you've seen several times. It shows all four phases of the Neighborhood Storage Project, from the original concept design in February, and then where we're at currently. The dollar amounts that you see for Phase One A and Phase One are still the bid amounts. We felt it was just too premature to include where we're at as far as actual construction dollars, because we have not completed those projects yet, and there is still going to be some fluctuation in what those final amounts are. But based on what we presented to you at the last meeting, that has not changed. We're still anticipating coming under the 4.5 million by a couple hundred thousand dollars in Phase One A, and same with Phase One. The Phase Two budget number has been updated, based on the previous Phase Two slide, which represents the pre-final plans. And then the Phase Three is still a concept number. So the next slide, the question was raised, if we developed these original concept cost estimates back in 2017, so we went back to the Village Board decision in April of 2017, and at the time, the Neighborhood Storage Project cost estimate ranged between 48 million and 55 million. And then two years later, the board voted on optimization, both increasing the size of the detention basins, as well as adding optimized sewers. So we took all those costs and added an inflation adjustment to see where that range would be in $2020, and compare that to where we were today, based on the previous slides that you've seen. So you can see that the range would be based on inflation between 68.7 million and 76.3 million on the high end, and we're sitting right at 68.3 million, which is under the low end of that range.
Bridget, this is Trustee Dodd. I just have another, a question on that. Should we make our decision on this, on this Neighborhood Storage in 2017, or did we do that in 2018? I thought we did it in April 2018.
I'm sorry. I think you're right, Trustee Dodd. I went and I pulled the slide from April of 2018, and that estimate was based on $2017. So that's
Based on $2017, I understand what you're saying now, which is why, okay, that, you clarified, thank you.
Thank, no, thank you. An updated schedule. You can see today, we're hoping to get a decision to move forward on Phase Two. Next Monday, we'll be presenting to the Park Board the pre-final plans. And then in September and early October, we'll present to the Village Board a contract with Storm Trap to continue with the vault construction. And that is tentative, but we're heading in that direction with Storm Trap. We plan to do additional public engagement. Actually, the September 24th date, I think it will change to September 30th, but we're ironing out those details currently. And then at the end of the month, we will have 100% design plans to eventually present to the Park Board either at their October meeting or November meeting to seek final approval from the Park Board. And then once we do that, shortly thereafter, we will take a recommendation to the Village Board to award to Berger or another contractor, the Phase Two construction work. And lastly, we plan to have a third public open house in January, based on the construction.
Ms. Berger, Peter Barrow here. Is the October, November Park Board final approval, the only additional approval that the Park Board needs to provide to this? Is there any further consideration that's going to take place for the IGA, or anything related to that?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Barrow. My read on the IGA is that the Park Board will review and approve the final plans, and that would be the only approval that we would need from them.
Thank you.
They might still have flexibility, though, you know, when we're going through sort of the final details on our, like, the IGA improvements and the like, if they change their mind on something like that. But from our point of view, we would have the green light. Is that an accurate statement as well?
Yes, that's absolutely accurate. And I want to reassure the board, and thanks to Trustee Dodd for, for, we had a talk, discussion about this today. One of the lessons learned we had in Phase One is not engaging with the Park Board and the Park District even sooner than we did. And since our 30% concept phase plans were developed, we've been sending them to Gailwell Hamilton, who's the Park Board's engineer, as well as the Park District staff themselves. So the whole goal during this process is that we won't have any surprises when we're ready to award the project. And we're proceeding in that direction.
And are there any other local government or, you know, county government approvals that we need? I mean, obviously, all of this sewer work has MWRD implications and the like, but is, is, there's no school district involvement this go-around, given the location? Are there any other governmental entity approvals that, you know, we're going to need for this?
Yes, there are. There's quite a bit of work, actually. We'll need EPA, MWRD, Cook County IDOT approval. We also reach out to the other utility agencies, AT&amp;T, Comcast, ComEd, Nycor on utility conflicts. So there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, none of which requires any Village Board action.
Thank you for taking care of that for us.
Absolutely. I thank the Burke team. They're doing the heavy lifting. So I think the last slide, this is, again, a similar slide to what we presented in July, just to reassure the board that we are engaging with the public, and we are moving through this process. Again, we'll have three open houses by the time we get to construction. We've sent some detailed letters out to the impacted stakeholders, as well as a detailed FAQ brochure on the project. So we, we hope, again, that we won't have any last-minute surprises. We want the public to be completely engaged until we actually start construction. So our key next steps, the Burke team is working on finalizing the Hibbert Park plans. We will meet with the Park District staff and Park Board on September 14th, continue with public engagement this month, continue negotiating with Berger on Phase Two pricing, as well as Storm Trap, to finalize a contract with them. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Any questions for Ms. Berger, Mr. Stein, Mr. Bremen?
I had a question for Mr. Bergman, just regarding, as we look at this and approving this, obviously, just, could you share any feedback we received from residents on kind of the first round of the stormwater utility fee?
Sure. Absolutely. And I checked with our utility billing team today, as they're really the front line to receive phone calls on our utility bills. And, you know, we've received, you know, some complaints. Generally, those calls have been associated with our typical annual summer high water bill calls that we get every year. The complaints added on top of that are about the fee. There haven't been too many, and generally, the folks have informed, told us they were informed of the fee, they weren't surprised by it, they understood the necessity of the project and the need for the fee, they just didn't like paying for it, which is understandable and not surprising. But, you know, we were expecting a very high volume of calls, questions, concerns, complaints regarding the fee, and that has not materialized this year.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions for the staff? So are, and you are looking for sort of a go-ahead here tonight that we should continue on the, on, continue on the schedule, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have to say that I think the decision to go ahead with Phase One, when there was some uncertainty, ended up being definitely the right decision. And with, with school out, and frankly, with school out and Park District programs closed anyways, there, frankly, probably wouldn't have been a better year ever to rip up the park. And so it, from the sounds of it, we're not quite done, right, but it's gone rather smoothly. And, and, you know, we had a couple of dusty days, which I know, Ms. Berger, you said, we learned from that and started spraying water around. But it's, and I'm sure, look, I, this is a major construction project that is always an inconvenience for anyone who lives nearby. So I'm sure there was plenty of inconvenience, but it seems that the combination of our, of our stakeholder representative and communication, and, and good work by the teams, we seem to manage that about as best as we, as we could have under the circumstances.
Well, President Polinsky, I would echo that. I think, you know, compliments to Bridget and her team for successfully getting through Phase One and One A, and can fully support Phase Two. I think it's a compliment that this project is, continues to move along, and Christopher Burke. But I'd also want to be remiss not for complimenting Eric and Melinda, and really, under Mike's leadership, because it's really helped to manage through the financials and the projections. It's fun to see this team, your team of Village Staff all working together on what is a very large, complex project. And keep it up. I mean, great job so far.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan, President Polinsky. We appreciate the support, and really, it's a credit, Bridget and the consultants have done a phenomenal job. So I, I don't deserve very much credit at all, but it's been a great job by Bridget, and, you know, we're excited to move forward. And just a quick background, you know, we, we weren't necessarily planning to have this discussion with the board on whether or not to proceed with Phase Two, but he'll recall our discussion in March about whether to go forward with Phase One and COVID. Now, this is a commitment we made to, to make sure we bring this back to the board and the community, to affirm that this is the right direction to go, given our financial situation. And where we're at, and we'll have another update in September, we are in a, we continue to be in a strong financial position to move forward with the project.
Trustees, any concerns about moving forward?
I don't have any concerns. I think, you know, it was almost a little bit of a leap of faith earlier in the spring. And I think that, you know, going forward with the project was absolutely the right move, and we've made this commitment to the community. And it seemed like it was forever before we started, and now we blinked, and they're almost done with Phase One, which is just amazing. So I'm excited to keep going on this.
I guess I would simply second that. There's, it's really, I think, very little argument for not moving forward. Our staff has shown that we can do this and do this very well. And I have every expectation that this project in Phase Two will turn out just as
Okay, I'm going to assume from silence, everybody else sort of a-okay moving forward? I got three head nods, that's good. Okay, and a thumbs up, two thumbs up. All right. Trustee Kersman, I'm short a thumbs up. Can I get another one? There we go. Okay. All right. Bridget, Mike, you guys got what you need?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. So back to Trustee Sullivan, Municipal Services.
The other two items were approved on
The other two items were approved on consent.
Public Safety is Trustee Kersman.
Not report.
And the Judiciary Committee is Trustee Plunkett.
Yes, all items were covered on consent.
And Item 6.7 is reports from the special committees. No reports tonight. Item 7 is new business. There's no additional new business to discuss. So, Item 8, may I have a motion to adjourn?
No movement.
I think that was Trustee Sullivan. Is there a second?
President Polinsky, can I just ask a question? Just, just more formality. Did you, do we have to ask for public comment on Item 6.41?
We could ask for public comment. It's a good point. We're not really, we weren't voting on anything, but, but sure, that's.
It was more of just, you know the process better than me.
Well, let me, Mr. Stein, Mr. Stein, do you think I should have asked for public comment on Item 6.41?
No, it's not an action item. It was essentially just a discussion and getting some further direction. However, public comment is always welcome in the Village. If someone wanted to make a comment, I'm sure that you would not say no.
I'm looking, well, let me, let me just ask. Is there anyone who's on the phone who would like to comment on Item 6.41, which was the, the presentation that was made regarding the Hibbert Park project? I don't see any participants' names that I don't recognize right now on Microsoft Teams. They're all staff and, and elected officials. And Mr. Skiles, I assume nobody was pounding the keyboard on Microsoft, on YouTube Live?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. All right, but Trustee Dodd, thank you. I, I, I normally err on the side of more public comments, so my oversight there. All right, so I will go back. I believe there was a motion on the table from Trustee Sullivan to adjourn?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, that was Trustee Kennedy. Would the clerk please call the role on the motion to adjourn the meeting?
Trustee Sullivan.
Hi.
Trustee Barrow.
Hi.
Trustee Dodd.
Hi.
Trustee Kersman.
Hi.
Trustee Kennedy.
Hi.
Trustee Plunkett.
Hi.
President Polinsky.
Aye. So, the motion carries. We stand adjourned at 8:23 PM. Thank you all for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.